Good evening, this is the Halifax Board of Selectmen regular meeting and it is Tuesday, February 12th. We are being taped by Area 58 which will be televised on your local cable channel as well as YouTube and we will begin the evening with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Fire from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, does anybody have any additions to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, so were you able to review the Selectmen's minutes for the regular session of January 16th, 2019? Actually Troy, you won't.
I wasn't here.
Would you like to move them, Tom?
Sure, so moved.
I'll second them, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Nope.
Troy will say, okay. Tom, do you want to take it away?
Sure. I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Withholding warrant number 67 for $138,146.14. Vendor warrant number 68 for $59,269.38. Payroll warrant number 69 for $372,545.90. Vendor warrant number 70 for $70,516.18. Withholding warrant number 71 for $135,540.24. School warrant number 72 for $432,87.84. Ambulance commitment from 11419 to 12019 for $27,162.10. Ambulance commitment from 12119 to 13119 for $59,934.30.
I think you meant to say 53.
That's 53.
Oh, what did I say?
59.
Oh, okay, it's close. $53,934.30.
I'll second those.
All those in favor?
Aye. It's good to think somebody was listening. I move to approve the following warrant and commitment. Vendor warrant number 73 for $115,205.86. Mobile home park fee number 2 for $5,160.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve payment of Selectmen bills dated February 12th, 2019. Massachusetts Municipal Association for $40. The Labor Relations Connection for $210. KP Law for $2,654.16. Michael C. Gilman for $2,376. Attorney Lawrence P. Mayo for $3,515.63. Brooks &amp; Durensis for $4,263.94. National Grid for $1,724.39.
Sleep.
Yes, no, I was listening to them. I know, I was a little afraid.
National Grid for $36.88.
It's a 1907 building, yes, the year is coming through.
And all the windows need to be replaced.
Insurance direct bill, $100.
Yeah, all the windows need to be replaced.
Well, they're not insulated. Powers &amp; Sullivan LLC, $7,500. I believe those are the accounts?
Yeah, yes.
Service Masters South Shore, $4,500.
Right, that was for the Blacksmith Shop.
Oh, right.
The main bill.
The vandalism, right?
Yeah, Maya had paid them directly and that was the amount of deductible that we used to pay on that issue.
I'll second those.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I hope those kids are proud of themselves.
I'm not too sure of those kids.
I'd like to trap them down and give them a verbal spanking. Okay, Charlie?
Yeah, just so the board's aware, this is not as bad as it looks. About half of this pile is site plan review for O'Reilly's, which we'll get to in a minute, but we won't be, at least because of the mail folder, we're not going to be here until 11 o'clock at night. Start off with Janice Hayward, is interested in serving on the Halifax Fireworks Committee. I thought the board was quite familiar with her past record and didn't feel the necessity of having her come in. I did amend Pam's term of office.
What is it?
You said 22, so it's three years.
Three, so 19, 20, 21, 19, 20.
Yeah, but it can't be more than three years and by going to 22 would be three and a half years.
Well, because theirs goes in August, that's how it goes, so it's kind of.
So from January, we can't bring it.
Good try though.
Yeah.
No, it's not my fingers.
So if the board would vote to appoint Janice Hayward to the Halifax Fireworks Committee on August 31st, 2021, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to Janice for stepping up.
Absolutely. Dancers World is interested in her participating in this year's Memorial Day Parade and activities. I'll get a copy of this over to Will Corry, our Veterans Agent, and contact them directly. Also, just a reminder also to me to start contacting everybody else too, since we're a little more than three months out at this point. I'll get something to that. Time goes by, yes. Resident Kane by, just to point out, there's some money available possibly from the Massachusetts State Government for solar opportunities, including roof installations. And I'm going to go through this, I'm not necessarily interested, if there are other things besides roof installations that might be more of interest, I mean given, you know, we just spent, for instance, I think $3 million or so on a school roof, I don't want to get in a situation avoiding the warranty, given what's happening roofs other places, but at least it's a reminder that you can take a look at more of the solar grants that might be available to us. We have six cemetery deeds assigned, I'm passing those along. We do have an abatement request for Bill 2288, this is for 2009, 2010, 2011, this is out of the ordinary thing. The board had approved abatements for these bills, but for whatever reason, when the information was sent down to the town collector's office, they abated the bill now, but they didn't abate the late fee. So Pam and I are recommending that you vote, even though in essence you did that years ago, that we reaffirm that we're voting to abate the $5 late fee for those years.
Does that make sense? Do you want to motion?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you can see, once I move the O'Reilly's Site Plan Review, which is here, available to the board, this is before the planning board, this is for an auto parts store to be located at 3300, which I believe is the address next to the Nazarell Farm Stand, if I'm correct. They would like comments in by March 7th, I'll bring this back to the board for discussion in a couple of weeks and then the board wishes to consent the comments to the planning board. We did get a letter from Massachusetts Package Store Association about our discussion on NIPS, it's fairly lengthy, I'm not going to read the entire thing.
Oh, mama mia, can I just say honestly, okay, this whole discussion started after cleanup day in April, when the beautification committee came in and talked about how many NIPS were all over the place and we were brainstorming, trying to figure out how we could stop that. I mean, I understand that people don't want us to ban them and we weren't officially going to be in them, we're talking about ways to keep people from littering and I know that people of the Facebook have had some ideas about putting cameras up, having more police staff, but those all cost money. And so we were exploring ways to get less NIPS on the ground and in people's yards. And I found it interesting that more people were upset about us having the discussion of trying to figure out solutions than somebody actually drinking and driving and littering at the same time. Okay, and that's a quote and I will allow you to say that. No, really, we're trying to come up with solutions.
No.
We're not dictators, I don't appreciate that people think that we are, I don't appreciate that people call us crooks and all that kind of stuff because we are volunteers and we were just looking to make sure that our community stays clean and stays safe and we don't have people drinking and driving. Simple. And our police officers do the best that they can and they can't be everywhere because we only have so much money to fund so many positions and that is our reality.
Was there any recommendations in the letter from the association as to what we could do about the NIPS?
Jan, well, it's interesting, obviously they're against the ban for several different reasons. One, they basically are saying it's illegal, second is that eliminates people's rights to have NIPS, it also is economically difficult for the package stores. Setting aside all that for the moment, what I was interested in, near the last line of the letter, which included, more importantly, is that there are reasonable alternatives for Halifax.
Let's talk about it.
Results.
Perfect.
Right, and I did reply to, this was sent by email and by regular mail, I received the email back on February 7th, I emailed Attorney Millian, who's the executive director and general counsel for the Package Store Association, saying, hey, by all means, please let us the reasonable alternatives. Until it's been a few days, I've not heard back, I'll report back to the board.
Okay, can I just stop you one other second? And the petition about the plastic bags was not brought by the Board of Selectmen, it was brought by the beautification.
Beautification Committee.
And there were people that asked us about it and we told them if they wanted to do a citizen's petition, that was up to them and that was not something that we, the Board of Selectmen started. And I also want to address one more thing and that is when somebody goes on Facebook and starts talking in a broad sense that the people who volunteer their time are dishonest and, you know, aren't hardworking people that take time out of their lives to make our community better, it makes me sad that people make that broad statement because it is not true. I am not a crook and I'm not. No, I just want to make.
You got to do a better imitation than that, you're going to go down.
No, 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 I mean, there are really good people that volunteer and I don't want people to read that and not want to volunteer because they're being, you know, just kind of summarized. I know I should get over myself and you'll probably be mad that I even brought that up and I didn't even expect to bring it up, but it just is disheartening, it really is.
Does your husband have a nice cloth coat?
Why?
Don't you know that reference, this is what, even before Watergate or anything, this was Nixon back in the 50s, there was a dispute about, or scandal, possible scandal about his wife wearing a certain type of coat and he had to say that his wife wore a nice cloth coat, not one of these fur coats or anything like that.
You know, there's so many people that volunteer their time and it's hard, you know, like it's an icy snowy day, a lot of people don't want to come out and come to meetings, you know, they want to be home with their families as well, but it's because they care about our community that they're out there and I just wouldn't want somebody to read that and say, you know what, I don't want part of it anymore because I'm being judged for something that I'm not part of.
No, I've been.
It's hurtful.
So they're saying that I've been robbing the people for the past 28 years and I'm overwhelmingly rich?
No, it's just a few people were saying it, but they're the ones that are ruining it for everybody else. So just be mindful of what you type because it can be very biting and very hurtful. Okay, enough, I'll get off my sand.
Okay, so I'll wait.
Softball?
I'll wait here for the Package Store Owner Association. As Ken mentioned, there are a number of suggestions, I mean, we don't have the resources in many cases, it's either increasing the hiring department budget for people picking up litter, it's an increase in the police department for additional patrols and gadgetry and whatever else. I think it's very effective for if we find someone dumping trash bags.
Yes.
Many times we can identify where that material came from, but I think it's going to be, no matter what technology you have, if someone's driving down the road at 8 o'clock at night and they throw a nip bottle out, how are you going to point that nip bottle to that car when you can't see anything anyway, you know, so.
And one might think that if they're throwing it out of the window, they don't want to be seen drinking and driving.
So what I did do was I contacted some of my colleagues and neighboring communities, some communities have apparently have had more of a problem with this than others. A ban has been discussed informally in other locations, but nothing's happened with it in a sense, no one's tried to pass a bye or anything. However, there seems to be much more general support for doing some sort of deposit redemption program. Some of the communities have already written their legislators, some of them are considering doing so. The board may want to contact its, the Halifax Legislative Delegation and urge them to consider supporting whatever legislation's up there for something along those lines. If the board wants, I can see there are particular bills that have been filed on this subject and then the board could point, well, we like this one, maybe not so much that one or something like that.
Yeah, we want to come up with a solution because it's definitely something that the beautification committee brought to the Board of Selectmen.
So that's where that sits right now, I know we have hit 7:45, any other appointment?
Hi, Mr. Carlson.
Good evening.
Okay, so you're here to talk to us about the additional days?
Yeah, and we don't want to be here.
I know, it's too bad.
He was good enough to contact us beforehand and I looked at the traffic map, I know he's north of Boston, it was completely red, you know, around 128 and outside, so it would have been a very difficult operation for him to come down here.
He did talk to Mayo and we have disagreed, so we want to see if we can open up the discussion to changing the consenting agreement, I guess we could have that discussion at some point in the future.
Okay.
And change in the language in it so that you guys can have that a little bit.
So if we did that, then we, for me personally, I think we would need to have a procedure in place if additional, like we would formally inform a butter so that they could come in each time that you would request something so that we can get, because those are the real people that are affected by the shows for the both part. We don't have any complaints about traffic or public safety, so we know right now with the number of shows that you have, things are going smoothly.
Right.
Tom?
So if we could try to set up a point for that discussion.
Yeah, I personally, I don't have a problem with entertaining or looking at the agreement, you know, seeing if some adjustments can be made or what have you. Just the way the agreement is presently, I came in again today to read it one more time and it's very specific about the maximum of days.
Right.
And so, you know, that would have been a tough call at this time, but to entertain conversation about, you know, the consent agreement, I would have no problem doing that.
So when would, your next meeting where we can at least, when do you think we can get that?
I think, I'm actually thinking for the board here, I'm thinking that before that meeting occurs, it would be helpful to have whatever proposals you want to make for changes before the board.
Yeah.
The board also would probably want to talk to town council, they probably would want to talk to the public safety departments and the board of health and such and make sure, you know, as much as we've not had any situations that I'm aware of in general, it'd be helpful to review what's happened during the last two years with the consent agreement and say, are there any necessary changes that the town would want to propose? And I think that's not a matter necessarily that just takes a couple of weeks of time since the way it's worked in the past, I suspect any changes probably wouldn't be effective this year, they'd be effective in future years.
Can we have some, just basic conversation, Charlie, about some broad ideas of how we would want it worded or how you would want it worded, like perhaps like we would limit the increments, how many days a year would be added?
Yeah, like I was in two years ago, I didn't foresee that.
Right.
I was going to ask for it, you know, I thought our 30 days would be plenty.
Right, right, right.
Couple of things changed and, you know, all of a sudden we're out of days.
Yeah. So I would suggest that when you, when you sort of talk to Phil about coming up with a strategy, that we do things like not more than five days in a, you know, per year with pub hearings being held notifying a butters, you know, with sufficient evidence that, you know, it would be fine to do that, you know, just wording like that. And then that protects you and it protects the town as well.
Right, I can have Phil do some kind of draft, send it to Charlie, send it to Attorney Mill or Charlie can pull it.
And be realistic about what you feel like, I know you just mentioned earlier that two years ago you didn't feel that, you know, you felt like 30 would be totally enough, right?
Well, I feel that way now and 30 would be, you know, I don't want anything.
Right, 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 right.
Like Phil was saying, maybe we should add five days, that gives you a two-day lead length, you know?
Yeah, but then we wouldn't want you to have to come back in a year and say, hey, I need another five.
I know, yeah.
So then it just costs you more money, it costs us more money, so when you do it, I just want you to be realistic about, like really what the future holds and know that we're going to want to make sure that, and I'm just speaking for myself actually, sorry I didn't consult with you guys. That I think that limiting a number of days adding to each calendar year with, you know, again, the public hearing to ensure that neighbors are happy.
Right.
And for the most part, we've only, yeah.
That's the operative part for me, I just want the neighbors, the butters to be involved in the process.
Right.
I mean, I'm not affected by it, but they are.
And I just want to promise that it doesn't take nine meetings.
I just met my new neighbor, moved into Jean's house.
Oh, yeah, oh, good.
The other Packers committee, they just started to move in, so they seem like a nice couple.
Well, that's nice.
They've done some work over there.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, they get a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah.
Tough time to get into a civic system.
Mr. Maker, did you want to make a comment?
Ms. Jean, she's a lovely lady.
You're good.
I'm dating you.
Oh, all right, I didn't, you were leading forward, so I didn't know, okay, all right. All right.
So you know, will, I'll have Phil get a draft to Charlie and then we'll proceed from there.
I'm sure that's something we can work.
Sorry. All right, safe travels home, it's icy out there.
Have a good night.
Yeah, be careful even walking out.
Um, you know, let's see, where are we, okay, Mont Ponce Pond, state contract, we finally got an agreement with the Department of Public Health, all the signatures are there, this is for the $125,000 grant that we received from the fiscal '19 state budget, I've notified Solitude, so, and we get the additional $10,000 from town meeting in a couple of weeks, we'll be able to treat both West End and Mont Ponce Pond's between money and the grant, the money that was already set aside by the town in previous years and the additional $10,000.
Awesome, thank you.
Um, let's see, Old Colony Plant Commission was able to get a grant for assisting the town in updating its housing production plans, so we'll be working with them during part of this year to get that updated.
How many years has it been since we did that?
Well, this is where it gets weird, there's evidence that we did this two years ago.
It was discussed.
I know it wasn't two years ago.
Well, I have a copy of the report.
Really?
2017, yes.
We did something else in 17 because I think it was back in 15?
Well, the first one was done back then, you're right. Then it has to be updated every so often.
Okay, all right, then that makes sense.
Well, which is where it gets weird because as much as all this work got done, I'm not sure who dropped the ball where, but it doesn't appear the state ever got it because they have a whole list of housing production plans for all the communities and ours is the one that's early.
It would have been Old Colony, right?
Well, I don't know, but nevertheless.
Because I don't recall funding anything.
Yeah, well, and we didn't, yeah, Old Colony had the money and they did, would have done the work and I have a copy sitting in my computer of a housing production plan, I'm just not sure what happened after that, but they were able to get money again, we're not spending it.
No, no, that's fine.
To get the housing production plan out there.
It's all good.
Get this one to the state.
It'd be nice if they work on us getting, be able to use to Mobile Home Park and other places, just probably by 10%.
I think that's beyond their.
Yeah, that's the legislature and they made it pretty clear.
Well, they could support it.
Talibank Form from Arnold Clucus, I think it is, was interested in serving the Historical Commission or the Historic District Commission, Pam has sent both those committees a copy of his Talibank Form. The fire chief announced that Stephen Heath has been appointed as Deputy Fire Chief effective February 12th.
Well, congratulations, Stephen.
Deputy Chief Heath has more than 35 years of experience with the fire service, including work in Halifax and Kingston, has associate's degree in fire science from the Maslow Community College, will be doing a formal swearing-in ceremony in March up in the Great Hall. And also I think that night, the chief will also have several other firefighters of lower ranks being sworn in at the same time.
Well, he just got his certificate, Stephen did, and so did, what's that, his name?
Dubraski.
Dubraski.
We had Abby Dubraski pass her param.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah, first try.
One of them, which is, you know, these days when I look at the ratios of people, you know, going through that and passing, especially on the first try, that's excellent.
Yeah, super proud.
Very good. The, we're going to start that meeting at 7 o'clock, just like we did with the police chief swearing in, we'll do that upstairs, do a little socializing and move our regular meeting downstairs after that happens. Revolving Fund, sorry, Metro, sorry, did I miss?
You did.
Yeah, I don't know why that's still there, that's from two weeks ago, Metro said the regional roundtable lunch we already talked about. Revolving Fund Water Department Cell Tower Antenna, the water department, this is a formal request that the board would have to vote on, they're looking to do a new revolving account with $20,000 limit for plan review and inspection of any antenna upgrades and work to be performed on the water tower. I think this has been, they're asking for this because with the very recent renovation and repainting of the water tower, they want to be very protective of any cell tower work that goes on there. That's, and so what they're telling the cell companies is, we're fine, we'll be making changes that are necessary, but we want somebody, third party, to review those plans and make sure that they're not going to harm the water tower.
Where, now, maybe I'm missing it, where's the money coming from to build the revolving account?
It would come from the cell companies.
Some of the companies.
Just as, for instance, Rob, for instance, is building inspector, if he can request money from an applicant for a, if it's a very unusual industrial building, for instance, or something like that, he can get it outside consultant, which the applicant will pay for and that money goes into revolving account for review. We've done the same thing when we've done the solar race, when we ask for money from the potential developers, it goes into revolving fund for the assessors to use so that the, we can pay our attorney bills and things like that and all that that are directly related to the solar.
Thank you.
So the board would have to formally vote to approve that revolving fund.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, Concession Stand Youth Baseball, Pete Perone had asked if we could just simply send the electric bills to them straight on for concession stamps, rather, we, basically, you know, whether it's every six months, nine months, whatever, we call them up and say, hey, the account with all that money sitting in the revolving is low, send us a check. And they do that and it works, but he just thinks it'd be more convenient for everybody involved simply for us to forward the bills to them.
Okay, is all, yeah.
Yeah, and they do the same thing right now with the Historical Commission, the meter, I believe, is attached to Brockton Store, but the, to use it.
Those is paid.
Right.
I mean, the bills, it won't come in our name, it'll just come in the concession.
No, we'll still get the bill.
Come in the town's name.
And then what Irma will do is forward the bill to them.
Okay.
So if that's okay with the board?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, school buses and passing cars.
That's been resolved, I believe. You can talk and I'll give you the update.
Okay, that'd be great. So Kimberly King had contacted the Selectmen's Office about cars passing, school buses when the red lights are flashing, which is not a nice play in private Halifax or a nice play to her kid's school bus. And she was looking for more enforcement of that. Obviously, as we just talked about for the littering, we have certain resources, there are several school buses all happening at the same time, we only got two police cars that can't be all places at all the time. But I mentioned, you know, and she had contacted the police chief also, so, you know, he was in correspondence with her about it. I did mention that I'd seen news reports of, essence, cameras on those stop signs. So what happens is the stop sign swings out, the cameras there are still on both sides of the stop sign to record anybody who goes by the stop sign when the red lights are flashing and that provides some identifications, license plate numbers, whatever. How that's enforced from there, I'm not quite sure, but obviously it'd be something that you'd have to talk to the bus company with, the school department and the police chief to try and work something like that out. But you have more of the story.
Well, I know that the fire, the police chief in his unmarked car decided to follow a school bus to ensure that it didn't happen and it didn't happen, but the poor bus driver thought she was being followed and radioed in that they were being followed by a strange black car. So then the fire chief, the police, had to go on the radio.
No good deed goes on.
It's me. So he pulls her over with the blue light so she, the bus driver knows that it's.
Who has now melted into puddle.
Right, because now she's getting older, but, yeah. So he didn't witness that and again, I think we could meet with them, but I think that we haven't had a lot, oh, board in charge.
We're negotiating a bus contract right now, so if that's something they're going to.
We haven't, yeah, we haven't had that many instances. This is really the first complaint that we've gotten.
Yeah, I mean, it's not something new, it'd be different if the flashing light law was just passed yesterday, but this has been around for years, but you're not supposed to pass a school bus when the stop, the light's flashing, the stop sign out. It's ignorance on some people's part to do things like that, how do you, how do you It's, it's ignorance on some people's part to do things like that. How do you, how do you control that? Because we can't have a squad car following each bus on its route.
But maybe.
Which is why I'm talking about the camera took off.
But maybe they're already planning on that.
Well, I don't know. I'm saying if that's, if that's something that the police chief wants to follow from the school community.
Now's the time to do it.
Now's the time to do that.
Yeah, I.
Talking bus contract.
I mean, we can talk to him. I don't know that he felt strongly about it, to be honest with you, but who's to say that, you know, the bus company, if they're getting new buses, might, maybe that's technology that's automatic, and they have the cameras. Do they have the cameras inside the buses still?
Yes, they have the cameras inside the buses.
Yeah.
So let me do this. Let me contact the police chief, see what he sees. If he is, I will contact Joy and, or, hey, there might be some interest in doing something like so. Is this possible?
No, nothing. Go ahead.
Okay, chief.
Well, nothing's happening here, huh?
That poor bus driver. I know, and then she gets, then she gets the blue lights because he wants to reassure her, but it probably.
She also asked about getting a crosswalk at the corner of Plymouth Street and Cranberry Drive. I did suggest a petition. Not a petition article, because it's a petition, because, um, the article's not necessary in this case. It would go through traffic safety and board selectmen. I did point out the problem is that for the crosswalk to be legally enforceable, it needs to be attached to a sidewalk.
Sidewalk or curb.
Um, but I don't, you know, if we get something, then we'll act on it. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I talked to the board about snow firing release, and the council's completed work on that, and the sideways survey has, so I think that's done. Um, well, Mr. Pet was scheduled to come in at eight fifteen. This is just underscored for this mail here.
Are we going to reschedule?
We're going to reschedule for two weeks from now. I'll get an appropriate time for the 26th. On the financial software migration, I'm sorry about how long that is. You don't have to read all of it. Um, I just copied and pasted from, um, a different email I'd done with the finance committee. But software has notified us that not today, not tomorrow, not next year, but at some point in the future, we'll probably need to convert from software the way it is right now to something else. Um, it might very well be with the same company everything, but the particular software and how we use it, whether it's cloud-based rather than PC-based and things like that, um, we'll have to go down that road. As we found on the website, we need to the last minute, and we just end up with a lot of time pressure. And talking with the financial staff, I think the idea is not this coming fiscal year, fiscal '20, but fiscal '21, we'll need to seriously investigate doing that move ahead of any deadline that hasn't been announced yet, but might be announced at some point so that we don't get in a pressure generated situation. Um, and so I put the finance committee on notice, not in a bad way, but just, hey, just, you know that this is going down the road something. And then talking with you all, the same thing's probably going to happen. I'm not, in terms of going to other vendors, I don't see the point. The reason being that no matter who I talk to, everybody hates their financial software. Nobody likes it. Doesn't matter what they're using. They've got problems with it, and everybody says it's too expensive. Um, if I was something I could do about it, I would, but it's beyond my capabilities. And it would make more sense to stay with software or its overall company, simply because at least we're used to them, they're used to us. Um, and wouldn't be a major overhaul in the software. Um, and so I'm not considering, um, moving to a different software company for the financial software. But we'll deal with that in the coming year. Um, the building inspector had submitted three zoning amendments. Um, I'll bring, you know, before, maybe, it might be in a couple of weeks, I'll bring this back to the board, and we'll send the memo to the planning board, formally requesting that we hold a public hearing on any of these three and anything else that's come in.
Are any of the three, the, the ones that we talked to when we had the planning board here and the zoning board here last year? Remember when we were forming the zoning?
Yes.
Yeah, bylaw committee. I don't remember specifically.
Has anybody met that zoning?
No, as far as I know, the zoning bylaw committee has not met, or if they have, it may be have been one meeting, as far as everything's been happening.
Does it make sense for them to look at it?
I don't think so. I don't think, because I think given their irregular schedule, waiting for them to take an action would be a few too long. Um, I may be talking with Rob about a few other possibilities, just to move some of these items, not just these three, but some other items, um, along, um, some related ones, but.
But I want to get zoning and planning involved in all of it.
And what would happen is that when these are go-to, first of all, legally, they have to go to the planning board anyhow. And what I would do with the zoning board of appeals is at the same time, I can see, see them and say, these matters have been brought to the board and are being submitted as our possible articles for town meeting, for planning board hearing.
Okay.
As much as I like the idea of the zoning bylaw review committee concerning them, I.
No, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, last year, we did a lot of, like, we had people from the planning board, we had people from the zoning board, talking to the board of selectmen about certain things, and I feel like if we're not having the zoning, uh, what is it called?
Bylaw.
Bylaw committee, then I think we all should be in the same room talking about. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, well, we could do that, and no, I agree.
Yeah, I think what they need to, that we need to revisit that, because if they have a problem meeting, maybe others might like to be able to go on that committee and, and maybe be more active.
Um, it's maybe not two weeks, but maybe the first meeting in March, we can try and arrange something. Um, the, so the board's aware, the, um, concept he was talking about, multifamily dwellings, it's confusing in the bylaws to whether that's two or more or three more, because we also talk about duplexes as a separate thing, or two families as a separate thing for multifamily. So to clear things up, along with to change the definition of multifamily, so it says very specifically it's three or more units, so that it's clear that duplexes are not multifamily and, you know, two-family houses are. They're considered different, um, uses for various properties. Um, he also, um, is recommending some sort of special permit system for reinstating possible use for us previously abandoned. This is to do with the substandard lots where we might have had houses or dwellings on them before. The use has been abandoned, obviously, for more than the two years that are allowed under the zoning bylaw, but at the same time, what we're left with is an empty lot that can't be developed. There may be some sort of process that we could follow that would allow us to reintroduce a use on that lot. He's also asking for, um, an amendment concerning occupancy permits and compliance with the town's bylaws, um, so that if we issue one, um, it's only done if the other use, everything else is in compliance. So, um, those are, so, again, I'll bring these back to the board, um, later, because we, not tonight, but, um, before they go up to the planning board with any other possible zoning bylaw amendments. We've already dealt with Fieldstone Farms. Our town report covers, Pam had asked if we're using, if we would like to use the drawings here for Pope's Tower and the central school.
Yeah.
We used the town hall, the old schoolhouse last year.
I don't have a problem with that.
It's fine.
Good idea, Pam.
Oh, it's just less work.
Did you draw them, Pam?
Again, I did. Yeah, what do you guys, one in the front, which one you got from the back?
I would say Pope's Tower on the front.
Folks on the front, is that, and then, okay.
Right. Because it's more recognizable in the.
Old schoolhouse back.
You think?
That's a problem with it. Either one's good for me.
I thought it was going to be a picture.
Well, I'm looking at the two of them and just saying, I don't know that either one's, I mean, the problem is, of course, all the, the trees have changed over the years.
Yeah, right.
Right. I mean, I don't get me that. I think that's a prettier painting.
We're, we're not trying to recreate what the, what the vintage, what is a vintage picture.
I'd almost be tempted to use the central school. Because we've used Pope's in the past, right?
So central school and, um.
Pope's Tower are the two, and Pope's Tower is that.
But they're almost very similar looking.
Yeah.
So I think I would do central school and, um.
We, we used the old schoolhouse last year.
Oh, we did? I'm sorry.
Well, well, I'm, I'm sort of like this. If I get on the airplane, whether I'm sitting in the back or in the front, we both land at the same time, long as they're both on the same book.
We don't always have to have a back cover, though.
No, we don't.
Let's just do a front.
Okay.
Okay, so what's it, so I mean, on the front?
Central school.
Central school.
Front, yeah, okay. Front only this year.
Yeah, maybe we could save a little money.
Um, solar fields, taxes, pilots, and legislation. Um, I know the assessors have been talking about this, and there've been a number of articles. The law, the laws in the Commonwealth, along with the decisions by the pellet tax, is it the pellet tax board, Tom?
Yeah.
Have been very confusing as to how solar fields are taxed, whether they are taxed at all, or we could do pilots, or what we can do at all and gain revenue from having those fields. It's not just Halifax, it's all across the state.
I, I went to the, uh, assessors legislative briefing meeting, and, uh, it, there is a bill in the bunch of 2,000-odd bills going, uh, for debate this year to just simply clarify it, one way or the other. What is it? Because everybody's looking at it differently and treating it differently, and, uh, and it becomes problematic when you're negotiating a pilot agreement, because there's some hesitation on the part of the solar project people if something were to happen down the road. Uh, I know the administration's been kind of pushing solar energy to the extent it can, which is huge. So I, I, I don't know where it's coming, but we probably should take some kind of a stand and maybe talk to our legislators and, depending on how we feel about it.
Are you for it, against it, Jerry?
Well, you know, it's, it's a revenue source, and, uh, you know, I, I don't think it really impedes the development of a solar field, because they've been going forward, and I mean, there's plenty of applications. Uh, obviously, they're a business, and if they can avoid paying a fee or a pilot, from a pilot agreement, they're going to want to avoid it.
But at the same time, it needs to be some equity in that, or quality, depending on how you want to look at it, that business A does pay taxes and business B does.
Does not, yeah.
And yet they're both using the land.
There's got to be some consistency.
Yeah, well, well, that's the other part, that of course, you know, hey, you know, I'd like a break too, you know, I mean, everyone's going to come in, you know.
Fair, firm, and consistent.
It's board's pleasure.
Do, is it possible? Do you think we could even get our legislators to show up at a meeting and discuss this? I'd like to try to go there.
Maybe talk about a few other topics.
Yeah, exactly.
Getting the charter school money separated.
Yeah, which is becoming crazy, yeah.
Let me see what I can do.
Gordon.
If you're going to talk about that, I'd like to treat charter school at the regional level the same way we treat vocational students.
Me and have them pay more money, yeah?
Well, because right now, the way it works is Halifax is 31%, but there's way more students from Kingston going to take charter school money.
Oh, yeah, right.
From Silver Lake.
What I actually, what I actually want is spin them off into their own school districts.
Yeah.
Separate out, I mean, I, you're right on that.
Be responsible for your own.
Just from that percentage, if you're a regional school, it should be treated like vocational. It's, it's the home, the home district's responsibility.
Yeah, because it's effectively the same thing. You're right.
Because right now, there's over 60 students from Kingston going to charter schools, but there's only.
Fifteen.
Fifteen to sixteen from both sides. So they're all away. That money for us.
Instead of four to one ratio, it should be a two to one ratio.
Right. And then we see that, um.
But my concept is basically, I think the charter schools would be that you're on each district. They get their funding straight from the state. There's no tapping our chapter 70 number to go, to get that. I mean, I, we're, I think this is the first year that we've lost money in a sense of the malcheck, the increase in the chapter 78 was more than offset by the increase in the charter school charges.
It would have had lost you in the governor's numbers, but when the legislature overruled the governor's budget, it became a chapter 70 number increase, otherwise it would have lost you.
But then I look at the other end of it in terms of Boston, and they actually, they lose money. The, the charter school, um, reimbursement charge, whatever you want to call it, is greater than their chapter 70 number. So they're in essence taking money out of the regular budget beyond the school budget to pay for the charter schools, and since there's no chapter 78 in Boston, we're looking at that one.
Okey-dokey.
Well, let's see what I can do to arrange.
Yeah, I think that could be helpful.
Um, let's see, we talked about that. Okay, solar field River Street, just so the board's aware, we do have an article and a warrant to authorize the town to negotiate a pilot for that proposed facility. There have been some correspondence of whether we could get an article for the February town meeting, and that's why it's on the list here. Uh, 407 South Street, I need to talk to town council. I'll just confirm the property's going to be vacated by the end of the month. I'll have an update in a couple of weeks. Um, let's see. The school fire suppression system, um. The bids arrived on Friday. They're much higher than expected. Totally, the budget estimated to be $2,300, $2,33,056.26. We've made a request to town meeting for just over a million dollars. Um, there's an article for that to be added to the 977 that was approved in May 2017. Um, I guess I've spent too much time with it, so I don't want to spend a huge more time with this. But basically, the costs were generated by several things. Um, material prices have gone up, the valid wage never goes down, it always goes up. I think we, because of the compressed timeframe, we had fewer firms bidding on it because they don't, they don't want to take on that challenge of getting everything done within, let's say, an 11- or 12-week period. Um, there's a lot of work out there, so a lot of firms that might have bid on it on a different year didn't. Um, as much as the GC price is very high, the second bidder was within, I think, about $100,000 of the first one, so it's not a situation that was unrealistic number. It was, basically, that's what the market is. Um, I'm not enjoying this any more than anybody else is, but, um, personally, I think we need, you know, both to protect the students and the staff there, but also to protect our investment in the building. Um, we need to be doing this. It's not going to get any less expensive, no matter how you want to do this in some future year. And putting it off, I mean, do we have to do it today? No. But we're going to do it at some point, because the current system will fail at some point, and then we'll be under the gun and have to do things that much more quickly, um, and it will be that much more expensive. So as much as I understand people's reluctance to be happy with the number, and I'm not happy with it either, it's not going to be any less expensive anytime in the future, and we're going to have to get it done either today or sometime in the future.
Yeah, and that's, you know, it's very unfortunate, but we've done everything that we can to move the project along, and last year, we didn't even get bid, so.
Yeah, it's, it's where it is, and we'll have to.
My eyes twitching.
Test the town meeting and see what their sentiments are.
Um, I think I have these things out there, but I do.
Familiar or familiar?
Just so the update on the current project, our doors window signing, we're having a review session tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon.
All in this hallway.
Right. Um, it is progressing slowly, um, so the door work is getting done. Um, Jim Lambrian, or what's actually Lambrian's, Chris, I think it is, Lambrian Chris, his la, his last name's longer than.
Yeah, yeah, because Don's away too, I guess.
We can just say his first.
Well, the Lambrian Construction wants to come in on Monday.
Right.
Presence day to go in there. Um, we require one custodian to be there to keep the building, you know, open. Um, that will be a double overtime because it's a holiday. Um, I think the board in general is supportive of the idea, the question is who's paying for this additional cost?
I don't think the town should pay for it. I think that Mr. Lambrian should pay for the overtime because it is his schedule that has put us in this position.
Well, it also happens to be school vacation week, so he's got four other days in the week that he could potentially use, and there will be staff on, sorry, on those four days.
Yeah.
So if Monday's the specific day, I don't know why we need to, other than the frustration of getting this thing done, which is a real.
It's been going on much too long, if I'm anything, so.
Well, it's the doors, yeah, it's the doors.
So it's, I'll get to a couple of things. So as far as money's concerned, is the board's directive that I say to Matt and to Jeremy that yes, go ahead, but only if Lambrian's going to pay for the custodian?
That's my vote.
Second half.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay, I will, I'll pass that on. Um, there is still door work to be done, as it is, Jim had emailed me, I think it was last week, to say, uh, two of the doors that came in.
No, not bad.
About again, sorry, we're going to have to reorder, so I don't, and I have no idea, maybe we'll find out tomorrow what the schedule looks like for those two doors.
Well, those are the questions I want to ask tomorrow, because there were some issues. I, I know the latches were something that they had to make some adjustments for, and because there were new work doors going into old work frames, there were some issues with the, uh, weather stripping. It also has to be looked at, and we'll see how that all works out.
We'll get some more information on all of that. Um, and then there's punchless score. Some of the work's been done, some of it hasn't. Um, you know, Martin, um, Marty Party has been keeping an eye out.
Marty's doing, has been doing an outstanding job.
Awesome.
Marty represents the OPM, the overall project manager, and he's been doing a great job, being on top of this stuff.
Um, as far as the fires, um, I'll get to that in a minute, okay. Um, just random stuff, federal government shutdown and guidance recipients. This is a, this, John Kisa had emailed me last week, maybe a couple of weeks ago, while the shutdown was occurring, about the possibility that town do some sort of guide, I can assume on the website or something like that, to provide information to aid recipients to say, okay, this program. okay, this program, you are getting your checks, this one, it's delayed two weeks, whatever. And I understand the concept, but the state, I think, was thinking along those lines before the shutdown ended, and from what I was hearing today even, that the governor's office was working with the state agencies to have something set up in case something like this happened again, and I would think they would be.
On Frank Construe.
They would be the best ones to manage something like that because they have the capacity to keep it up to date. It's not something I could follow at all. But right now, not in that situation, but I wanted to bring you John's comments on that. Electric charging stations, electric municipal vehicles, while I've been working with Green Community Projects, Lisa Selvin's been extremely helpful on administrative end for our community and a number of others who don't have, like, you know, energy czars that can spend the time on this. We had suggested other funding programs besides the energy program, which either subsidize or completely pay for things like charging stations and electric cars for municipalities. I didn't know how much interest there was by the board, there doesn't have to be, but I wanted to at least tell the board that these things are available, and if the board was interested, I'd call off, if not, then fine, I can put it in the file.
I think it's a cool idea, but I don't think it would be used by many, and I, and I know it's to encourage it, but it's the state's money, it's the taxpayers' money, so I think it would be best used in another way, in another green light.
I can't, I can't see having them unless we plan on in the near future have some outcry from the town that they need an electrical station plugged in. I think we have more important things on the table right now than looking at a plug-in thing.
It's not ever free. You don't have to.
Yes, I mean.
It's gotta be maintained and taken care of once it's gonna be.
And the electric stations, I mean, you could set up, you know, like a charge card type of station so that.
Revenue?
Just like the electric.
Just like with the electric bikes that you see in some cities now, you have to run your charge card through or some, and then the bike sort of essence opens up, you can use it, but you've charged your charge card. It'd be the same type of thing. Parking meters, same type of thing these days, a lot of cities, you run your charge card through. Okay, but at this point, nothing, and that's fine, I can take that off my list. School renovation project we just talked about, marijuana and zoning, I know it's not quite eight thirty, but we're gonna call it's eight, why don't we say it's eight thirty?
It's eight twenty-three.
Yeah.
Do we have all the parties here?
We have, Mr. Baker's here.
Maker.
Yeah, it's Maker, that's what threw me off, you all, Baker, so I was waiting for Bob Baker to come in, and I was thinking, isn't it funny that there's a Bob?
Are you related to the Maker family here?
Yeah, I'm Bob's neighbor, I'm related to him.
Bob, why don't you come on up?
Thanks.
Yeah, well, can I just, I'll just give you a little preview, so there are a couple of things going on. One is I ran the board about marijuana zoning in general, we'll get to that in a couple of minutes.
I'm Bob's.
I know, I know, Kim.
We were, we were coached together, we coached baseball together.
Then for, there have been a couple of ideas thrown about in terms of specific zoning acts that we can keep doing. Mr. Maker's had one of the ideas and he'd like to get the feel from the board's thinking about it tonight.
We're looking to expand the zoning a little bit. We don't want to be uptown, we don't want to be around schools often, but the industrial zone has the daycare right in the center, which blocks off that holy area. So what about adding a little, a zoning into the commercial business area, where it opens up a few more parcels up there to make it available?
So you're saying that you want to expand the industrial zone up the street?
And overlay out the ways a little bit, even including into Morgans and for the parcels. If you guys, like, research other towns and stuff, these towns are pulling in over half a million dollars for these businesses. And the company that I'm working for, we don't want to be uptown, they don't want to be near no schools, that is why I have the ability to open up in town. So if we could open it up a little bit more, get away from the daycare, get a little bit, just keep it in one part of town over there where nobody's gonna be really bothered, it's not near no residential. It, it makes it, it's huge for the town. I mean, these guys are pulling, do a little research into Wareham, Wareham opened up three. So it'd be like run by, like, basically, you know, my family, the taxes are gonna be spent in this town, I pay taxes in this town, it's not some company from New York coming in to open up a dispensary. It's gonna be run, owned and managed by us in town.
So can you just explain to me, because I'm not, I'm not zoning guru?
Neither am I, Kim.
Okay, so you're trying to move the industrial line further up 106?
Further up.
And your cutoff is at Morgans?
Hey, we.
Or the police station?
Even before that, because we, we asked, there's a building beside Morgans, it's like that blue building over there?
Yes.
We literally had an agreement with them at one point, well, we thought that building was industrial zone, and we were gonna proceed with it, but obviously, you know, he came, my guy came to Patrick, I mean, Patrick came to Charlie, we had the host to be, we had a lease and everything else, it wasn't industrial.
Okay.
So we're looking to overlay a little bit, get into that, into the business commercial area. And I'm not saying we want to be uptown, we don't want to be nowhere near there, we don't want to be near the schools or nothing. Down, that's a great area down there, it's on a busy road down there, and it's gonna be huge revenue into the town.
So have you talked to, I don't want to monopolize the questions, but have you spoken to the planning board?
We did that first, the planning board actually, I believe they okayed it, financial agreed with it and everything else, the finance board and everything went to town.
Went to the finance committee?
Yes, they originally agreed it, then they backed, then they didn't agree.
So they originally agreed, I don't remember your permit?
Yeah, we were just talking about last year's hearing with.
Oh, okay.
So now we're trying to.
But that was for the general commercial.
So that was moving into general.
Yeah, 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 that was a voice of a different college.
Yeah, yeah, well.
I started saying, they wouldn't have anything.
We did all that last year.
I think Mr. Maker would like to know is, what's the process for, for either expanding the industrial zone to those parcels or creating an overlay zone to include those parcels? Because if you look at the map, basically, the way that the daycare center and the dance studio are laid out, they take out that whole section of town.
Yeah.
For industrial use.
Well, lots and lots, gonna be 500.
On that side of the street, you've got the storage place, you've got.
Morgans.
No, industrial communications has the towers out there, and then it comes down to Laurel Street, is it there?
Circuit.
Circuit, Circuit Street.
That's all, all industrial now?
No, that's commercial business, and industrial stops right before that, we get to the power lines.
Okay, okay.
So an overlay would bring it down to probably right up to where Morgans is right now.
Well, as long as it's connected to something, what I, what I would be concerned with is a spot zoning thing, because that becomes problematic, but if you can run it down the street and it's touching an existing zone, an existing industrial zone, and you're bringing it down, that at least makes some sense and that has some.
And you've got at least one business with the mobile repair place, Els Auto.
I don't think.
Well, that's not, no, no.
No, but I'm saying, if he, if he brings it up to Morgans, I'm just going that far, it's like a continuation of it, really.
So let me ask you, Charlie.
Morgans would then become a pre-existing non-conforming.
We need to check to see if there are retails available.
Yeah.
Can you, can you create an overlay zone for industrial to overlay a commercial district?
Well, basically, you're, you're doing a marijuana overlay zone.
Right.
That's what you'd be doing, just like we have a cell tower.
I mean, it stays industrial though, it's not gonna change the meaning of it.
Yeah, but see, like, for instance, we, we have our adult entertainment in industrial, so does adult entertainment then need, could it go next door to the pot shop?
Yes, as long as it got the special.
Okay.
Didn't sort of near his houses on Circuit Street, right?
On the backside of it, yeah.
So is that over 500 feet?
Um, you know, I'm not really sure, it's a ways back, there's a lot of.
There's a lot.
There's a lot of land back there.
And you got a buffer zone there with trees and stuff.
On the other side, there's bogs, there's trees, on the other side to the residential, there's trees, there's acres of land back there.
Have you talked to anybody at Morgans?
I haven't, no, no.
My only concern there is.
You think they have a problem with that?
Well, you know, on the, on the face of it, I'm thinking no, but I'm thinking if I was Morgans, I'm going, if I down the road wanted to say I would go out of business and I want to sell the property to somebody else that wants to do something commercial, now, I don't know that they're protected.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a problem with this, I'm just trying to think it, think it through.
Well, then it sounds like the better thing to do, you know, adult entertainment, not disadvantaging Morgans, would be now a specific overlay.
Yeah, right.
Doesn't care what the underlying zoning is, whether it's commercial, industrial, agricultural.
Exactly, right, I think that's a better approach.
So how should I approach?
How do you do?
Well, you have to, in essence, you know, we've done it with other uses, is that there's, there'll be a section in the bylaw that specifically says, we're creating an overlay zone for marijuana, and here it is.
Yeah.
One specific area, one specific location.
Or varies, well, again, no, you don't want, area, yes, location, no.
No.
Just area, right, the whole conforming area that always.
Yeah, I mean, we could.
Right, because otherwise we're now spot zoning.
But you'd be, you'd be limited to that area.
Exactly, exactly.
Unless the town, at some point later, said, well, we're gonna change the overlay zone.
Right.
Oh, jeez.
I think in terms of him proceeding, I mean, obviously, he can put an article on town meeting.
Just have to take ten signatures.
Yeah, and you're gonna have to get something prepared showing what it's gonna be, something prepared.
We already had that prepared, we had a host agreement set up, all that kind of stuff.
No, no, what he's saying is you need to have an article prepared for that kind of zoning that.
Yeah, and.
Just like, just like you prepare the article for the, to allow it in commercial, you need to have an article that creates an overlay zone for marijuana, and then they'll have to be in, not, there'll be verbiage describing the overlay zone, but you'll have to have a map also describing where the overlay.
So that it can be put on the town map.
Right.
So did you talk to the planning board about this specific, not last year?
No, just last year.
It may be a good idea for you to visit them just to get a temperature.
Talk to them a little bit.
They are meeting next week, yes.
Just to get a temperature.
Yeah, no, definitely, I'm sorry, I wanted to, I want to make sure, before we put any money into this and anything else, I just want to make sure the temperature's right.
So if you want to get on the agenda, my recommendation would be to give Terry and all a call tomorrow and ask to be placed on the agenda for the 21st.
We've got to have discussion with.
We've got history of knowing something similar to this before, you know?
I don't know that we have an overlay district.
Well, for the telecommunications.
Telecommunications, that's the thing, there's a history, so it's not as if we're going out of the way.
I don't get it.
My suspicion is that the planning board would be receptive, that's just a guess.
So I'll see you tomorrow, and.
No, you see Terry.
Yeah, I don't want to come, you know, you can check his phone number.
Well, Terry's phone number is, it's on the website.
She's in the building inspector's office, you're just.
He wants you to check his homework, though.
He does, I'm just thinking tomorrow, I'm gonna figure it out, me and Charlie will figure it out tomorrow. All right, thank you, guys, I appreciate the time.
That's all right, bring your check, because we're paying for his time.
Yeah. I'll write you a check, right?
No checks, please.
Yeah, please, no. No, Bob, you don't.
No gift cards, no checks, no nothing, no nothing, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Maker, is that, is that your bodyguard in the back?
The speed maker, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
He was somebody I coached on the field.
Yeah, my CCD.
A CCD, I was a CCD coach.
But she's old.
How long, right, many years, right? Most of your career.
He gives I O, he's right, that's all.
Oh, okay.
Joe, are you here for anything specific?
Yeah, support service.
Yeah, he can read his book.
Oh, okay.
So on the other.
Did we post this meeting, Josh?
All right, people.
The other, Matt, the other. All right. Joe? The other matters to the marijuana zoning, a different concept was from the industrial part, that we have that 500-foot radius, no-go zone around childcare facility in Dancers Road. The question came up as to, not for retail, but for cultivation, whether the town would be interested in reducing that no-go zone to allow parts of the industrials drive and maybe across the street, that in fact a cultivation facility could be put in there.
That would be cultivation and processing, right?
It could be processing, and it depends on what the town.
But it's all, it's all interior, so it's not exterior.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, we could have the same complaints that people have mentioned about a potential one down in South Halifax in terms of smells more than anything else.
But they've come a long way with that kind of stuff.
Scrubbers.
But, I, you know, I didn't know if the board wanted to think about that possibility. Again, we're not, we're not quite out of time yet because I'll see the board again on the 26th deadline for our, was as much.
I want some time to think on that.
Yeah, I mean, I can see the merit of that, because we've effectively pre-clipped all, most of our commercial.
Industrial.
Uh, excuse me.
Industrial area.
And then I had ran to the board a couple of weeks ago about this, obviously, we were very progressive in terms of getting the zoning ahead of the curve versus most other communities. By, in terms of if we were interested, we got it zoned fairly immediately, both for medical and for regular retail marijuana for all the uses. We haven't seen any activity except for Ford daughters, and that's gonna be obviously up in the air for a while because especially with the buying out of Ford daughters by the other company. So I guess the question, whether it's for you or for the town as a whole, is that if the town is interested in having marijuana facilities of all the types come in, we're going to need to liberalize the zoning a bit more. Now, the two things we talked about tonight are attempts to do that, to allow more spaces, more places that would allow this sort of thing. Whether you all or the town want to broaden that is something, I'm not saying that we should, what I'm saying is if someone says, well, why don't we see these places come in, the Halifax are coming into these other towns and cities, one of the reasons is, as much as we provided a large amount of zoning for industrial, especially on retail, we're very, very limited, in the sense of no one is going to South Halifax to go to a pot shop down there. It's not the equivalent of going out apple picking. It's gonna be, it's retail in the sense of retail downtown. You go to North Hampton, it's right off of Maggie Ward, for instance.
Accessibility.
And I'm not saying we don't have 91 sitting here, but in a sense of if a retail store owner wants to come into Halifax, they're gonna be wanting to be on 106 or 58.
Yes.
For cultivation, we have a fair amount of territory, but as we learn possibly, some of that land isn't really available, well, one is solar, we've got two solar projects possible, and then the land itself may not be conducive, for instance, for septic and such, so the town may need to consider whether or not it wants to expand the areas where cultivation would be allowed, with certain restrictions.
Well, I think if we're allowing retail, that we should allow cultivation.
That's a, I believe that boundary is state Charlie, I don't think town with the 500 feet.
Right, but I mean, but I'm, schools are not everywhere, but what I'm saying is that we've got 16 square miles of town, we have a lot of other areas of town that are not developed but are not in industrial, if we're talking about cultivation. I'm not saying that we should do that, what I'm simply saying is if the town is discouraged by the fact that we're not seeing facilities come in, that people apply for permits and such, that we'll need to expand where those facilities are allowed.
Are you saying we're being too restrictive?
In essence, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we've already talked about two of the concepts, and maybe we take baby steps and say, okay, let's see, if we do these, do we get, do we attract any businesses? And we'll see where, you know, how does that work for us, and then say, okay, do we want to take another step someplace?
Well, to play devil's advocate, I'm sure there's still gonna be people saying they don't want either, either one shells order growing in town. they don't want either one shells order growing in town.
But the town did support it.
The town supported it, of course, I'm just saying, it's still-
But, at this point, you know, there's enough on the table with those two concepts for me to follow up with, so I'll continue working on those, but I just wanted to leave that with the board, that if people come to you at some point, not necessarily tomorrow or next week, but say, "Well, why aren't we seeing more activity here?"
Already had that happen to me.
Yeah. So I'm switching topics here. I'm being gentle here, but 340 Mon Ponce Street, so Attorney Richard Serke, who on behalf of 340 Mon Ponce Realty Trust wrote to me, I'm not sure whether he was writing to me as the town administrator or as possible temporary zoning enforcement officer, about whether a new special permit application, ZB was, ZBA was necessary for this property for multi-use, family use. Right now, the current special permit for that location for multifamily expires in May of 2019. I replied that a new application would be necessary, his client could, as part of the new application, ask that a new permit be subject to review, not renew or extension, so it wouldn't have to go back to the ZBA for another renewal or extension, and that it should probably run with the property, not the applicant, in the sense of, at some point, everybody goes one way or the other, whether the trust sells to somebody else, or however, whatever happens. But it's probably better zone, you know, probably better logistics that the permit go with the property, because if the property changes and then the new property owner then has to go back to the ZBA, even though they're asking the same thing, and you never know how, you know, you roll the dice, and you don't know, the CBA may not be the same ZBA that approved it originally.
Is that something that's past practice on other properties?
No, that's the problem, is that, for whatever reasons, ZB on a lot of occasions has voted to have special permits go with the applicant or the current owner of the property rather than the property itself. So that if permit holder A sells a business that needed a special permit to prop, to the new person, person B, that special permit doesn't go with that property, it goes with that person, so that the new owner, B, has to go back to the ZBA and get a new special permit. We've done that with in-law apartments, for instance. Not just the five years for them, but we've said it goes with the original applicant. So if the property is sold, then the new owner has to go back to the ZBA and get another special permit for an in-law.
Just so everybody's on notice, I have to recuse myself from any conversation.
I understand.
Yeah, but wouldn't it make more sense that have a review, if a new person bought the property, just a review to see if there's been any major structural changes in the facility, than they have to go through the whole process to get another permit?
I agree. That's why I, why, for, you know, we just talked, I mentioned, for instance, doing reviews rather than renewals or extensions. And the thing is, that there's nothing preventing the ZBA from going to the building inspector and also a zoning enforcement officer and say, "I think something's going on with this particular property, could you please investigate it and take a look at it, in terms of the possible zoning violation or some stipulation of the original permit wasn't approved."
You're talking in general, not specific.
In general, not about this property, no. In general, I mean, anybody can call the zoning enforcement officer, building inspector, and say, "I think there's a zoning violation at such and such a location." You know, one of these stipulations isn't being met, could you please investigate?" And then the building inspector can go there, check it out, say, "Okay, no, there's no problem, sorry." Or, "There is a problem," and then we go through the enforcement procedures.
So he contacted you specifically?
Attorney Serke did, yes. He wrote to me by email.
Okay.
Basically laying out the case for simply having the ZBA grant an extension without going through the public hearing process.
That really has nothing to do with you.
Well, as I meant, as town administrator, has nothing to do with me.
Yes.
But the, well, the challenges for the property is that the building inspector has an interest in the property, and therefore, the, and the board has done this before on other occasions, if it comes down to a determination as to how the ZBA needs to proceed, then it will probably, that Rob would have to bounce it to you all, and then you would have to find someone as temporary zoning enforcement officer, you've done that before and given it to me. If you give it to somebody else, that's perfectly fine.
I think I would give it to somebody else.
Yeah, okay, well, in which case, but Attorney Serke didn't say, "Dear Charlie, as, you know, temporary zoning enforcement officer, please, you know, make a determination about this." He simply wrote to me and said, you know, laid this out, and I gave him an answer.
Okay, no, I'm understanding.
What he wants to do with that answer is up to him.
All right, thank you.
But I wanted you all to be aware of that.
Thanks, sure.
Just on the Halifax marble, there was a case management conference on February 5th, I'm waiting to hear back from council on that. Just received notifications that, you know, that was happening, no special documents about that. Engineering contract for the Pine Street Bridge and the Beta Group, the board needs to affirm having Selectman Roy sign this contract.
Still moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
All right.
Good. Fire suppression system owners project manager, Vertex, which has been the OPM for the other two phases of the work of the elementary school, submitted a proposal that should cost no more than $50,000. If town means proves the necessary funding, I'd return the board, this matter to the board for approval, that would be on the 26th. I suspect that's probably the best thing to do, since it's only the day after, it's not a big delay. The alternative would have been for the board to approve it contingent upon the vote at town meeting, but like I said, it'd be 24 hours, it's not going to matter, so if town means approves the project, additional borrowing, in a couple weeks, I'll bring the Vertex contract back to the board for approval. Site plan review in Mudfest, Burke, so I met with the plan board last week, it asked for waivers from all the site plan requirements, and here's why the plan board would be willing to waive some of the requirements, for instance, there are no buildings on the property that are part of the use that needs a special permit, so you don't need perspectives of buildings that don't exist, and that's one of the requirements of the site plan. There are no dwellings that are part of the use, therefore, you don't need to do anything about having drawings of the drawings, drawings of the dwellings. The plan board seemed to indicate that they want some basic information on the plans, such as lot dimensions and such. Also, the plan's going to need to show that it conforms with the stipulations in the zoning bylaw for outdoor, commercial, entertainment businesses and residential agricultural zone. Mr. Burke's going to be with them again in a couple weeks. I did want to note that Stephen Brown had sent in testimony that will be read at the planning board meeting on February 21st, it wasn't entered into the record back last week, but will be entered into the record in a couple of weeks. Ambulance, there was a question in the collector's office, they adjusted him out for November 28th from $2,537 to zero, I think that's just for one bill.
It was just for, yeah, it was for one month, because that, November was in December, they didn't realize that that payment was in December. So it was listed in that December figure.
So if the board were to prove that?
Your motion.
Second?
All those in favor?
All right.
Let's see, just so the boards are aware, the building inspector did ask on the school building, municipal school building committee and Scott McFerrin to provide some sort of plans for the root project at the police station, there should be money available for this, and I've notified Scott of that. I know, you know, Rob, I think, is doing his best to work with Scott on this project, but there are certain standards, you know, minimum standards need to be met as part of it, it can't be just a written description of the work, you have to have some sort of engineering plan. The MMA is having an eighth grade essay contest, they do need the okay from the board to allow the MMA to contact Silver Lake and other schools in the area, if we're interested in having our students be eligible to participate in this.
Of course. So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
All right.
I did want to mention the passing of Bill Perkins last week. He was obviously significantly involved in town government and community involvement for decades before he was here, but he continued that work during the 20 years or so that I knew him while I was, I had come in here, and I always found him a wonderful gentleman to work with, very enthusiastic about the town, wanting to make the town better, and, you know, obviously, the history of the town also, and it's very sorry to hear of his passing. I know his family was there for him, and both there and represented at the wake. Troy, I know, had been able to make it there last night.
It was, it was well represented from the town, and I guess some of my most fondest memories about Bill was that he was a teacher, an artist, a photographer, but one of his, my favorite things was he used to take the kids from the elementary school out back and do a nature walk with them. You know, do the nature walk and talk about the different insects and the plants and stuff to go and change it. He and Ruth contributed a great deal, his wife, to this town, so he'll be missed.
She was town clerk for a lot of years.
Yeah, she had, we had the Ruth Perkins garden right outside the library.
Cancer presumption bill, just so the boards will put it on the record, that the Division of Local Mandates indicated, in essence, that we could make a decision about a local mandate on the cancer presumption bill, because the state legislature had approved this legislation by unanimous vote, voice vote, but therefore, one of the exceptions to local mandate rules are that if it passes by more than two-thirds majority, sorry, we don't get to make a decision about it. So it doesn't mean there are no costs associated with it, I'm probably going to follow up with our legislators and governor to see, you know, encourage them to maybe, despite it not being a local mandate, the state having passed this legislation should consider upping funds and unnecessary expenses, but we'll see how that goes. I've already mentioned that Four Daughters was purchased by Verano, which is a nationwide company, I've not had any contacts with either company, and I don't know how this is going to affect the post facility in Halifax. It was mentioned in newspaper articles that sort of one of the holdings of Four Daughters was, of course, nothing's been built, there's no-
The property over here.
No permits have been pulled, there's no, even licensure or permit from the state, so-
But they were pretty organized, I mean, he had a team of people that had done this in Philadelphia, had done it in Colorado, so I think that they're purchasing that knowledge of that team.
So we'll see how that plays out, and we've got enough on the table, and we'll either go with say license or not, or, you know, both his own permits or not.
I think power is one of the issues down there.
Well, if they put like next to the solar panel field, they can get electricity there.
I think what they were waiting for was the solar developer to get his three-phase wiring.
I think that's where it's coming from.
So Sarah Nobles also sent a town bank form, and she's interested in serving youth and rec, and Pam has gotten that, I believe, from-
Have we heard back from them yet?
Like, sent it or did you send it? I'll take it. I don't know how many times they actually meet.
If it hasn't, if it hasn't been sent, we'll make sure, we'll make sure that Dick Steele sees it.
Yeah, because Sarah Nobles, if you don't recognize her name, is one of the founding members of the Friends of Fox.
Friends of Fox.
And she's an incredible person, so I'm really excited that she's wanted to step up.
I do not, at this point, have anything else to come to the board about outside of executive session, Pam, do you have anything?
No road openings, no road cats.
We are, I am requesting the board go in executive session to discuss-
Would you like to talk about with us?
Other than the fact, well, it's on the agenda in the fact that it's a reminder to them that the public hearing is on Thursday.
Do you have any words, like, are you going to try to keep it cheap for us? Sure.
Estimated entry to 104,000 dollars.
That doesn't reflect any of that roof work we were talking about.
Doesn't reflect anything.
And you, as a member, feel comfortable with the budget, that there's no expansion of the program?
This is just the first round of budgets we've discussed.
Okay.
This does not include any of the discussions that say for, the safety facilities and grounds.
So it's not the final budget at this point?
I believe the group needing to be worked on will need to be within that budget. I believe you'll see a large request for E and D dollars to be spent over the top of that. I also suggested to the superintendent that there was money that came back to the towns a few years ago, for Halifax money to go into stabilization.
Yes.
So if there's money that's being spent on roofs, that the town does have, we'll capital projects to put onto that.
Yeah, which is why we specifically wanted the money back for that reason, so aside-
It's going to be a test for-
No, I know. So aside from capital items, you know, I know you know the directive from our town was to level service and not have new positions or new programs, do you feel confident that budget has no new positions or no new programs?
I'm not sure on programs, I don't believe there's many positions. There's, there are changes in programs, so I'm not sure if that's considered a new program or a remapping of the individuals that are there to support different things.
So I would just ask as a taxpayer that you pay attention, I know you will, that's why you wanted to go on Silver Lake, so I applaud you for taking that on, so that's really where we see a huge difference in our budget, so I appreciate anything that you do and your associates on that committee to keep the assessment low.
Thank you for your input.
That's it?
I would move everyone to executive session to discuss the contract, sergeant's patrol officer, firefighters, highway, and police chief.
And park detective.
Discussion in public session will be detrimental to the town's negotiations.
And we'll be coming out and conducting any further business.
Good luck.
Troy, I, yes.
All right, and who's second about you? You second?
Me.
Okay.
I'm Mr. Second.
But Tom says yes.